Good evening, everyone. I'd like to wish everybody to the scheduled June 14th meeting of Whittier Vocational Technical High School. The first hour of business, we're gonna salute the flag of the United States.
Would you allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which we stand, one nation, united by indivisible liberty and justice for all?
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public comment. Is anybody in the audience that would like to address the school board to speak on any subject that's not on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I suggest a moment of silence for the period that has just preceded us? The shooting in Galifordia, the shooting in Virginia, and the fire in London? Could we have a moment of silence?
Thank you. Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the minutes of the regular school committee meeting.
Just hold on for a second. Since we have a lot of subjects to cover tonight, we also have a recognition of our retirees. So, I would like to wish, if we could move that up to now and then go on with the regular scheduled meeting. Would you need a motion to do that?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we're gonna bring up the recognition of the retirees. Ms. Lynch.
Okay. First, I'd like to recognize Mr. Paul Fitzmeier. Point up, Paul. Paul was hired for the 2004-2005 school year as a mathematics instructor. He was a chess club advisor for many years, along with various stipend positions throughout his tenure at Whittier. I would like to wish him luck in his retirement and thank him for his years of dedicated service to Whittier. Some of the things I want to talk about with Paul, Paul is an avid reader, and at the end of the summer, he brings me in a bag of books for me to read. And we've done a lot of sharing of our readings, and I just really want to thank you, Paul, for everything you've done for the students here at Whittier, everything you've done for me personally, and I wish you luck in your retirement.
Thank you very much. I didn't do it alone, so, thank you. Good team. Thank you.
Oh, Paul.
Pardon remarks?
Yes, would you like to say something, Paul?
No.
You're speechless? That's never happened.
I know. Speechless, that's no word.
And Representative Mira is here as well. Would like to wish you luck in your retirement.
Thank you all for coming out today. Thank you for having me be a part of it. Truly honored and proud to be here. We were at the State House today in a constitutional convention. I think tomorrow, we're gonna be in there arguing about marijuana laws or something. So, that oughta be fun. But, you know, one thing we don't really have to debate a lot about in the State House is our public educational system. I think Massachusetts today, very proud to say this, has what is probably the best public education system in America today. And that doesn't happen by accident, doesn't happen on its own. It happens because of the hard work and dedication of some truly committed people who have given their lives to producing the best educational system in America today. So, I won't keep you long, but I do have a citation here for some retirees. I'll just read from it really quickly. Be it here, by no wall, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to these retirees in recognition of their many years of dedicated service at the Whittier Vocational Technical School. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 14th day of June 2017, and it's signed by the Speaker of the House, Robert De Leo, and by myself, Lenny Mira, your State Representative. Congratulations, gentlemen. Can I read their names off? Have them come up and get them?
Sure.
Okay. Is Jonathan Tynes here?
She's not here.
Not here? Okay. Mary Hamel? Not here? Okay. Are we down the beach? All right. James Martin? And Paul Fitzmeier? I'll leave this here, and thank you.
Great. Thank you, Representative. Next, I'd like to recognize Jonathan Tynes. Jonathan was hired for the 2001-2002 school year as a long-term substitute teacher for the special education department. Beginning in 2002 to the present, he has been a special education instructor. He has worked as a United Nations advisor, a mentor, along with many other stipend positions throughout his tenure at Whittier. I would like to thank him for his many years of dedicated service to the students at Whittier and wish him luck in his retirement. Mr. Tynes is a wonderful musician that I actually run into him quite a bit at the beach at various places where he plays, but at the end of each school year, for the last three or four, he has saying to the senior students, and I can tell you, there's not a dry eye in the house, because he gives such passion for his students and the work that he does here at Whittier. So, Jonathan, I wish you great luck in your retirement and much health. Thank you.
See, in the old days, there used to be a flash.
Do you have anything else to say, Jonathan?
And you were blinded.
All I have to say is, I love this place. We have the best year. I love my colleagues, and I love my students.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Mr. James Martin. Mr. Martin was hired for the 2006-2007 school year as a mathematics instructor. In 2008, he was hired as a physics instructor. He worked in various stipend positions throughout his tenure at Whittier. I would like to thank him for his many years of dedicated service to Whittier and wish him luck in his service. Mr. Martin is a teacher where kids love physics and math, if you can believe it, and he teaches with so much enthusiasm, and he makes students learn, and they don't even know they're learning. And I think that that is a talent that not everybody has. And he's able to do a lot of cross interdisciplinary activities with the kids. He does a lot with the HVAC group, he does a lot with electrical group. He recently helped our Skills USA students become state winners, and I just really want to thank you for what you do here at Whittier and the passion of the work that you do with our students. So, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much.
Well, first off, I appreciate the comments. Thank you very much. Like I said in my retirement letter, I feel like the second cousin that came for the weekend and stayed for the summer. I was only gonna come for a couple of years, just for something to do. And I've been here twelve, I think. And I really love it. It's a great place. It's my third career. I'm hoping to have four. I can tell you a funny story. Yesterday, I was in the teacher lounge, and I fell asleep on the couch, and the lady that is the, works in cosmetology, thought I had died. She went and got the nurse. I told my wife that story. She said, "It's time for you to retire." Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Awesome one. I don't know. I don't know the answer. Okay. We have two more people that have retired already that I'd like to recognize. They were unable to make it tonight. Ann Garangelli was hired in the 2009-2010 school year as a health occupations instructor. She retired in October 2016, and I would like to thank her for many years of service. Ann worked tirelessly with the students in the health occupations program and made sure that those students were ready and prepared to work in the nursing field. Mary Hamel was hired in January 1992 as a substitute teacher. In 1995, she was hired as a history instructor. She retired in January 2017. During her career at Whittier, she worked as a mentor and John Collins Writing Coach for many years, along with various stipend positions throughout her tenure at Whittier. And I would like to thank her for her dedicated service to Whittier. And she, Mary, retired in January of the school year, correct? So, I want to thank all the retirees. This was quite a monumentous class of really high-quality instructors, and I really want to take the time to thank them for their many years of service. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to admire and congratulate these retirees, and I've noticed in my tenure here at Whittier that the staff, not only experts in their particular subject areas, but they also bring the students a lot of life experiences that really, I think, add to a student's enrichment. So, I think that's quite unique at Whittier, and I'm pretty proud of that. So, we'll miss you, and don't feel that you can't come back. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, back, Mr. Tucker, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. That was very nice to hear about the retirees. I would move the acceptance of the minutes for the regular school committee meeting on May 10th.
Second.
Are there any omissions, deletions, or changes? None being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move the acceptance of May 10th, minutes of the executive session.
Second. Right. Are there any questions on the minutes of the executive session? None being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Treasurers report.
Would you accept?
Second.
Are there any comments on the treasurer's report? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. We also have to have a vote, which is in your packet, Ms. Lynch.
Tonight, I ask to have a motion to borrow money, to move that the district treasurer be authorized under the provision of Section 6G of Chapter 156 of the Acts of 1967 and Chapter 134 of the Acts of 1972, and with the approval of the chairman and the district committee to borrow money from time to time, anticipation of revenue, for the 12-month period beginning July 1st, 2017, and issuing note of notes therefore payable within the fiscal year 2018.
Should we move?
Second.
Any questions on the need to borrow time to time? None being heard, all in favor, please? Yes, sir.
How much is the maximum we can borrow?
I'm not sure. I can tell you that we have done this motion for the last five years or so, even more, and we have never had to borrow. So, I would think that it wouldn't be very much.
All right. Had we borrowed much?
We have not. We have not had to.
Thank you.
That's good to know. Anything else? Excuse me. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. We're still working on the superintendent's evaluations. How many do we have now? Ms. Rand?
Six.
You have six.
I apologize, I haven't brought mine, but I'll give it to you. Thank you.
Right. I definitely want to do analysis for the next meeting, so, for those that haven't, please try to do it at your spare time, or we'll send Lisa right out to your house together. Thank you.
Your reminder would be helpful.
Yes. Tonight, we have an anticipated report from our student rep, Brianna Jackson. You're on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all other school committee members. The Gay Street Alliance Club has just finished their activities for the year. They ended by making identity flags, peace signs, and other symbols that represent gender identity and sexual orientation. They also have begun discussing possible activities for the upcoming school year, along with celebratory farewell to the seniors in the group. The Interact Club has had their final outreach activity on Friday, June 9th. They participated in and raised money for the Haverhill Relay for Life, which is a component of the American Cancer Society. The club members provided services for the Relay for Life, setting up with the committee, and even walked in the event. The chorus wrapped up the year last week. They're looking into possibilities for next year's concert and the show for the musical production. The senior talent show was a lot of fun again this year. There were 14 acts, which ranged from dancing, singing, poetry reading, and the bands performing. The students were supportive of their classmates and really showed their appreciation. The multicultural club planned their end-of-the-year celebration on Thursday, June 8th. They met to enjoy each other's company and discuss plans for next year. They've had a great year, with one of their highlights being the acquisition of a new club logo, along with the help of visual design. They now have club sweatshirts with the logo on them, including their motto, "Strength lies in differences." They hope to continue to help spread Whittier's commitment to cultural diversity in the coming school year. Student government has been conducting the 2017-2018 class office elections. This has been a months-long process here at the tech. A total of 20 student candidates have used their school-issued iPads to gather signatures from peers, teachers, their guidance counselor, and their assistant principal. These same students were also tasked with using their school iPads to generate and then record a video election speech that was then hosted on the school's internet. Students are currently voting, and next year's class officers were announced early this week. Model UN has finished for the year, and the environmental club has been continuing its daily recycling activities. The KEY Club has closed off the year with their election of new officers for the upcoming school year. They also finished their two projects for the year. Their first project is their Lily Pad Project, in which they plan to donate the eight pads to local hospitals for children on IVs. Their other project is the Teddy Bear Project, where they plan to donate teddy bears to local police stations in the coming week. The National Technical Honor Society held their annual induction for new members on Wednesday, May 24th. They would like to congratulate all new inductees and look forward to another promising year. Track has finished the season on many positive notes. Both male and female athletes placed in the CAC Championship Meet, including 14 athletes that moved on to Division III State Meet. One senior qualified for All States, placing fifth in the long jump, finishing his season ranked 11th in the state. The team has many young athletes coming back for next season, and they're hoping to continue to build both the girls' and boys' team. The baseball team had an outstanding spring, outstanding season this spring. They continued their dominance in the field with another large school Commonwealth Athletic Conference championship. The team finished the season with a 17-to-1 record, with five players selected to the All-Star Team. They competed in the Massachusetts State Tournament with a tough loss to Bishop Fenwick. While the team is graduating some talented seniors, there is a core group of players returning to the, returning next season, and the team hopes to continue their success. This year was the first season for Whittier's girls' lacrosse team. The team won two of the three games they played. There were 12 girls from the Whittier team and five from the Sparhawk School in Amesbury. All players expressed an interest of playing next year. The positive experience from this season should springboard the program's numbers significantly for the next season. Whittier's softball team had another great season, earning the 2017 CAC League Championship for the third straight year. They finished the season with a 19-to-3 overall record. The team played a great game in the state tournament, losing their quarterfinal matchup to Amesbury 4-3 in 10 innings. The team is losing a few fantastic seniors, but looks forward to having a promising team next year in the spring.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good report.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note that this is the first paperless student report we've had in a good long time, never.
Where is your paperless agenda?
I'm still, I'm old. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to comment that the athletics is, as always, a vital part of Whittier. As we know, each season, we have at least 40, was it 40% of the kids that are more that go out for sports, and it's a good tradition. And the girls, I did go to the girls' softball game, and it was a hard, good game, it was a tough loss, but at the end, we move on to next season. Okeydoke. And now, we have the report from the superintendent. Ms. Lynch?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Tonight before you, for informational purposes, I have personnel action and hires. I have the MCAS after, spring after-school program, the Above the Influence Program Manager Program, hires for an electrical instructor, a history instructor, and a special education instructor, cluster chair and department heads for the 2017-2018 school year, hires for our project discovery program that begins in July, and our online academic summer school program instructor for our summer school program again that starts in July.
Mari?
Mm-hmm.
Could I just ask you, what is the Above the Influence program?
It's a grant, the Shannon Grant, that we've been able to, we had the room where the, was it called again? The Hidden?
Hidden Plain Side.
Hidden in Plain Side.
Right.
We've had speakers from that program. We've had surveys from that program, you know, again, trying to make sure our students stay alcohol and drug-free.
Okay. I figured it was related to that, but I wasn't exactly sure. I'd never heard that before. Thank you.
Thank you. Resignations we've had this year, we have had a security monitor, a metal fabrication instructor, a guidance counselor, and electrical instructor. Budget update, the eight towns have all approved our budget. We're still waiting for final approval from Amesbury, Newburyport, and Haverhill, and that should happen in these cities by the end of the month. MCAS update, the class of 2017 and the class of 2018 have 100% pass rate on the MCAS exam. All students in those two classes have fulfilled the MCAS requirement. We will be offering an MCAS prep program this summer to incoming ninth and current ninth graders. On Thursday, May 11th, I attended the Amesbury City Council. I want to thank Kara Cosmas and school committee member, Representative Toni La Sage, for attending this late meeting with me. On Monday, May 15th, I attended the Salisbury Town Meeting. I want to thank Alina Gilbert for attending this meeting. The school budget was approved. On Tuesday, May 16th, I attended the Newburyport Finance Committee, along with Kara Cosmas and school committee representative Brett Murphy. On Wednesday, May 17th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association Scholars Award Ceremony. I want to congratulate our valedictorian, Casey Salguero, and salutatorian Benjamin Wilson. On Tuesday, May 23rd, I attended the Kiwanis Trade Person of the Year Ceremony. Brett Bateman of Machine Technology received the award and will be continuing with his employment at McDermott Machining. On Wednesday, May 24th, I attended honors night, along with school committee member Alana Gilbert and administrative team. This was a wonderful night, that we were able to honor students with perfect attendance, high honors, Skills USA state winners, and certified nursing assistants. On Monday, June 5th, I attended the Haverhill City Council Meeting. I want to thank Kara Cosmas and Scott Wood for attending that meeting with me. On Thursday, June 8th, I attended the MAVA meeting, which is the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators, at MSBA, and we met with the state treasurer, and Kara Cosmas attended this meeting with me. At the meeting, we were able to discuss the needs to upgrade our aging facility here at Whittier. On Friday, June 9th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Small Business Award Ceremony. We won an award, and I have those here, for special job creation in the Merrimack Valley. I want to thank the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce. On Friday, June 9th, I attended the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable Meeting to honor retirees on the North Shore. And at this point, I want to thank, I want to take the time to thank the school committee for its support this school year. Because of your support and hard work, I truly believe that Whittier Tech is one of the best schools in the state. We will continue in the next year to provide high-quality vocational education and a rigorous academic curriculum to ensure that all students are college and career-ready. And I really want to thank you for your support in making this happen for our students. I'll pass these awards down. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Mari?
We got eight towns, so everybody's passed, therefore the budget's passed, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the only reason the cities haven't, they haven't met yet.
I think that's something that we should note, that Mari, prior to Mari's coming as well, also, but we have done, the superintendents have done a phenomenal job in going out with the help of the administrators, and we are very fortunate as a vocational school to have our budget supported regularly, almost 100% every year, and that's a wonderful, wonderful achievement.
And I have to thank the cities and towns. We've developed some really wonderful relationships with them, so that they understand the work that we're trying to do with our students. I'd also like to talk about some of the outside projects that we've completed recently. In Ipswich, the carpentry department built flower boxes for storefronts in the downtown area. And in Merrimack, we completed a shed for the Merrimack Council of Aging. And donations, at the Council of Aging, we donated two Adirondack chairs, and the Relay for Life team that last weekend, they spent the time, they slept over. Terry Bragg, one of the instructors, stayed overnight in Roxanne Grover, worked with the kids, and walked around the track at Northern Essex Community College for about 24 hours. So, I really want to thank them for doing that. And the least we could do is donate two Adirondack chairs for that event, so, thank you. Also, I would like to, acceptance of donations, and that is in your packet from Kara Cosmas that we have received. We've received a value for this month of over $37,000 for donations.
Would you accept the donation?
Second.
Would you?
Comments on the donation? Some quite large.
Yes, they were. Very impressive.
All in favor of accepting donations? All opposed? Unanimous.
Annually, we need to have a vote on school choice. At this time, I think our admissions numbers do not warrant us to open up our school for school choice students. We have enough in-district students for next school year, so, I guess at this point, I'd ask the school committee to not vote in any choice students, unless we have an in-district student that moves out to an out-of-district town while they've already been accepted here.
Mari, there's not a deadline or anything? You can open this up at another time? If need be?
I believe I can, yes.
I don't know. I thought you had to make a decision by June.
We have to make a decision and have a vote for that. I don't foresee that we would need to open that up during the school year, so.
Thank you. So, how would you like to word it? We will accept up to six if?
I would like to word it...
To maintain school choice closed.
Yeah. Have school choice closed for this school year, unless an in-district student moves to an out-of-district town.
Right. So, move to early.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that, but I've been on both sides of that school choice. Can we just leave it? It's up to the superintendent if she wants to go forward with it, or you just want to cut it off?
It has to be a...
We have to vote every year.
It has to be definitive. It can't be maybe.
Right. Every year.
Is there a motion to?
Lisa, did you get that motion?
Could you read that back there?
So, you're not going to accept school choice for this school year, unless an in-district student moves out of district.
For the school year 2017-18.
Yes.
And there's a second to that? You mean the motion, Mr. Irving?
Second.
Second by Dr. Testa Ruddy. Any more comments or questions?
What is a yes vote?
We're closing.
Closing.
We're closing.
Yes.
Yeah. All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous.
You don't vote to close it every year, it's open automatically. You'd think it would be the other way around.
Got a question on, don't be preemptive. I might take, Miss Cosmas, next.
She's not gonna get the vote.
We just voted on one. Oh, to that, yeah. On all these donations, we do send letters of...
Absolutely.
Thanks, and...
We do.
Is it, do we write the letter in regards to the donation, or is it just a boiler-type letter, thanks?
It mirrors what is in the letter. Thank you for your donation.
Okay.
Estimate the value.
So, it's a little, it's personal in a way?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
That's all I wanted to know, yeah. I think if somebody makes the effort, they should at least...
Estimate the value.
So it's a little, it's personal in a way?
Yes, oh absolutely.
That's all I wanted to know, yeah. I think if somebody makes the effort, they should at least personally, well, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the principal's report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and rest of the School Committee Members. In your packet, you see the draft of the 17-18 Student Parent Handbook, and in the handbook are the highlighted, all the highlighted changes. So if there are any questions, hopefully answer them for you. Yes?
There wasn't a lot of changes, but have we had any problems with parents or guidance with this? Any of them ever asked questions about it?
Not really, no.
Does anybody bring anything up? Did you sign it?
No, they signed it, and it's, you know, it's a pretty thorough booklet, you know, so it does cover just about everything.
Thank you.
Yes.
How are we doing in regard to the changes with the marijuana laws in Massachusetts? We were supposed to be addressed, of course, they're going to be discussing it again, but we were supposed to be addressing it this year, and has there been any issues, concerns?
Well, there's always issues and concerns, but the state, I think at this point, the state law is unclear and as well as policies for schools unclear, so we're waiting to get more information on that, and we'll move forward on that one when we see that information. It's, it's still unlawful in school.
Thank you.
Is it, is it, I know it's unlawful in school, but is it also unlawful as opposed to cigarettes for the thousand feet?
You can't smoke on, on school property as well, so you would get a ticket if you were found smoking on property.
Even though it's not stated, it's covered?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Even though it's, even though it's been accepted through medically, they can't bring it here?
Well, medically, we haven't had that, that issue brought to us, so that would have to handle that as that arises. There weren't many changes in the Student Parent Handbook this year, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, principal's report, and again, just going over-
You need to roll on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I have a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept?
Mr. Early, second.
Second.
Second, but could I just ask a quick question?
Mr. Murphy, second.
On the, I didn't get a paper copy of it, it's on my iPad. That's okay. So is it going to be highlighted on here? Because I've been scrolling through it and I haven't found-
It should be highlighted in there.
There aren't many highlights. If you, if you go to CC and DD appendix-
Oh, God, okay. So it will be highlighted?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The electronic version should be highlighted.
Thank you.
Any more questions in the handbook? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous.
May I make a suggestion on something? I'm very much in favor of using our iPads, but it would help me if we had a paper agenda, because I keep going back and forth, and if I had the agenda, then I could, is that too hard to get a few extra agendas at night?
For the meeting?
Yeah.
Just put on the table.
Yeah, just agendas, because-
It's funny you say that, because I was talking to Ms. Lynch about that this week.
And now Alana just said, you know, I'm going back and forth, and it just would help to be able to have the agenda, and then we just keep going and we can see stuff, yeah. Thank you.
I didn't have a problem.
About a split screen or two, two of us.
I couldn't handle that.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
No, I have a little principal's report, and again, all positive, just a couple weeks of the seniors. The honors night was held, as we heard, the 24th. Students were inducted into the National Vocational Technical Honor Society and were recognized for high achievement, perfect attendance, as Ms. Lynch said, the pending of the certified nursing assistance. On the 25th, the next day, we beat the rain with the mock crash. Jamie Landry, our police officer, took a nice, you know, and presentation for the kids. The next day, we had a talent show, and boy, our kids are talented. On the 26th, went off very nice. Then we had the prom, Tuesday, the May 30th, 217, at, at the Atkinson Country Club. We had 400 students and over 50 staff members that were volunteer staffers. It was, it was a beautiful night, beautiful night, and of course, we were all there, the administrators were there as well. And then, of course, June 1st, we graduated 335 students that received their diplomas and trade certificates, and again, that was a gorgeous evening too as well, and I know a lot of people were here from the School Committee as well. Wonderful night. I just want to congratulate the students and coaches for their outstanding seasons. We had the banquet last night, and congratulations to them. And also, as the principal, I'd like to congratulate all the staff and the students for all their accomplishments this year. It's been absolutely amazing and a pleasure to be their principal.
Thank you. Any comments? Yes?
Quick question, on the talent show that the kids do, I'm assuming that's during school hours?
It is.
Is that anything we could attend if we wanted to come?
Yeah, you know, we just, I'm sure you could talk to the superintendent, she could pull some strings, and you could go up on the upper deck, because it's open, and it actually was, was pretty amazing to see some of the, you know, some of the performers there.
I would love to be there.
It was great, I have to tell you. And talented. We have some real talented kids.
Sure, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one, one little question of personal interest. How many students were there with perfect attendance, once again?
That's a good question. I want to say, that night, I want to say we had-
I think there was only one with four years.
One with all four years, and I forget his name. Do you remember, Mr. Bishop?
Christian.
Yeah, picture his face, one for all four years, perfect.
That's what I was, I was wondering, because I have been impressed, I've been impressed before with the number of students we have with, with very good attendance.
Yeah, I mean, kids obviously, they want to come here, so.
It prepares them for them real well.
So the guy's just like, what are you doing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say that the, the students at the graduation, I was very proud of their, not only behavior, but their demeanor, you know, they were very-
Yeah, a lot, a lot of class and grace, for sure. It's a, it's a, you know, 334 kids, it's so amazing.
And I do think, not to be a little nostalgic, but I do think that majority of the students, just by the way they talk to you, really are going to miss Whittier, which is, I think is a very positive statement.
I know, I know that we've seen, Ms. Lynch and I have seen kids already coming back saying, you guys left already. This is how you have to sign in.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
One other thing, love the sports, and we usually do well on one or two, but also all the clubs. If you could convey our, you know, support to the, to the advisors and to the kids that are in the various clubs, and it runs the gamut, and that's part of school life. The academics, vocational, the sports, and also the various clubs. And I'd like to commend all of the advisors and the staff that support that.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Early?
Graduation went great. We had a great night for weather, couple quick things, the bleachers are full. I don't know if we're ready to add on to them. The only, the only complaint that I did hear, and I talked to a lot of people, as a lot of you know, is where they walk down the ramp in the durit. If we can look into that, I appreciate it.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Taking care of, I like that.
Well, I talked to-
Right, so I was lucky.
Coming down the hill.
Mr., Mr. Harry's working on that. All right.
Is the Michael Corosaro? Corosaro? He was our perfect attendance.
Where was he from?
He was perfectly perfect attendance, he was here.
Of course, this could have been-
Oh, boy, we're going to have to get that.
I don't mind.
We're going to get it for you, a knife ass.
Old town.
Yeah. Andy's my agent. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Andy.
Next on the agenda is the treasurer's report.
I hope the business manager.
I already did that, Charlie, but thanks.
Keep him straight, Tony.
Businessman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch-
I want to see who's awake.
Members of the committee. Couple of things to discuss with you this evening. A few of them are in your packets and a few of them are informational. First of all, in your packet is the recommendation to increase meal prices, and we are recommending that we go up a dime on student meals from $3 to $3.10, and student breakfast increases from $1.50 to $1.60, and the recommendation that the adult, staff, breakfast, and lunch prices be increased to $1.85 and $3.85 respectively, although I suspect there may be a change to that. We have included comparable meal prices of our member communities, and approval of this price increase keeps Whittier in line with our member communities, keeps us in regulation with USDA. And it's important to note that even though you do have the comp, several of the districts have not yet even determined their FY '18 meal prices, but many of them do anticipate small increases similar to what we are doing. So I would entertain questions and ask for a motion to approve that.
Mr. Early?
Quick question, what percentage of free lunches do we do?
I believe it's, is it 37%? I think we are, I think we are in the 40%. I don't, we're not at the 50% yet, but-
We're being reimbursed for that, correct?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're right, because I remember when we discussed the, the athletic fees, that it was, it was almost no, no increase because 45% of the students, students got the free lunches.
I only ask that for one reason, no disrespect to anybody, but, you know, it's there for people that need it. And I'm glad that, you know, we're able to do that.
I like to amend on the staff lunch, and the breakfast, to go from $3.75 to $4, and from $1.75 to $2, for two reasons. One is, the, the increase, you know, the student meal's going up 10 cents and the proposed staff lunch going up 10 cents, but percentage-wise, it's going up less than the students. And number two, I think $4 is kind of a, have you ever seen the lunches we have here? For the staff, it's pretty good, so I think $4 is, would be a little more appropriate. Whoa, what happened?
I raised my hand and threw out of my hand.
What?
I apologize.
All these shootings around here, you know, you're scaring me.
I make a motion to leave it the way, as, as stated.
What?
The way we recommended.
The staff lunch?
Either.
Well, not changing the student, I only want to change the staff.
I know, but I recommend that we keep it the way it is.
Point of order, what's the motion on the floor right now?
To approve this.
Okay. And you amend, you made an amendment?
I like to make an amendment, yeah.
I will second your amendment to change it to $4 and $2. You can vote on that.
Are there any, any other comments on that? So we're going to vote on the amendment now, correct?
Yep.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A bunch of losers.
Are you voting yes or no?
It was a question.
Charlie has an amendment to raise the prices to $4 and $2.
For the staff lunch?
And I seconded his motion to amend. We still lose.
So it's three, all opposed?
Opposed?
One and two. So fails, okay.
All right, now we move the regular motion.
Now we move the, the regular motion. All in favor of the regular motion as presented by Ms. Carlos?
Tony, now.
Tony, it's only June. Next month you can do this.
Who made the motion for the regular motion?
I did.
Dick.
I like Dick, man.
Dick and Brett, second. Well, passes, stays the way it is.
As stated.
As stated.
Thank you.
As presented.
Secondly, in your packet, there are two transfer requests. The first one is similar to what you've seen every year in June. It's the general fund transfer, and it will allow the district to move forward with purchase of equipment, supplies for next year. And also included in the, that particular transfer are adjustments that will bring into balance several salary and insurance accounts that are not expected to change between now and June 30th.
So moved. Second.
So in other words, you're, you're, you're reading on the good numbers, you're reading up the date?
Yes, yes, this brings it up. And there'll be a cleanup that I do in August when we close the books, but this is to balance some of the things that I know.
This won't hurt you or anything if you drink too much?
No, we're on track.
Kara, can I just ask you?
Sure.
May I? When I was looking through the account balances, there's still a negative almost $600,000 in the grants. Wouldn't the grants have all been in by now?
No, the grant, the grant allocation system changed. They used to give you the money all upfront, and now you have to request it every month, and you have to show evidence that you have paid for or committed for certain amounts. So what happens is, the larger grants were probably to, we'll get all of the money by the end of June, but we have to put all the encumbrances in to show what we owe for the end of June, and the revenue doesn't come in, so that's, that's a true picture of where we are. But I do anticipate all of that grant money to come in by June 30th.
Okay. I just thought they came in by the end of the year it would be all in.
They used to come in actually at the beginning. You would get the appropriation at the beginning of the school year, and that's no longer the case. We have to ask for it all year long.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Early?
I did have one more question in regards to the school attorney. Were adding $10,000?
No, no, if you recall, we have a $10,000, we have a $20,000, I believe, legal and $10,000 in negotiations. Next year, I really need to consolidate that, because we often go over in the legal, but we don't use the negotiation, so I'm just cleaning that account out to the regular line.
Makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions on the transfers? I'm being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous?
The second transfer request will actually appropriate the savings that we utilized from the bleacher project. You were notified at several school committee meetings about the boiler, the sewer ejector pump, and the chiller failures that happened during the year, and that these were major capital needs, they were unanticipated, they were not budgeted. We were lucky, because had we not had savings from the bleacher project, we would have had no choice but to use district funds to cover the cost of these necessary capital replacements. I just thought it would be good at the end of the year to allocate the excess funds into where they were actually used during the year, so that the appropriations reflect how the monies were spent for capital.
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve.
Motion, yeah, second.
Second. Any questions on, yes, Mr. Early?
I want to commend the superintendent and everybody involved with the bleacher replacement to save this kind of money, and I want to commend everybody. Thank you.
Anybody else got a comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next, the next item I want to update you on is the renewal of our audit firm. Since the contract with our president audit, present audit firm expires this June 30th, we issued an RFQ, a request for quotations, soliciting prices for audit services for a three-year period that begins this July and ends June 30th, 2020, with a two-year extension. Basically, very similar to the, the requests and the specifications that you issued when you did this five years ago. Of the three quotes we received, Powers and Sullivan, our current auditing firm met or exceeded the criteria and was the most competitive price, and I would therefore or exceeded the criteria and was the most competitive price, and I would therefore ask for the committee's approval to continue with Powers and Sullivan for the district's audit firm for the three-year period with the two-year renewal.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
I didn't get it, what did, what was it?
It's not in the agenda, no. We just opened those quotations this morning, so I wanted to update you because if you approve, I can get them on board and they'll start the field work immediately for this year's audit. Uh, they were only up about $2,000, and the interesting part of, I think they're at $29.9 fixed for each year, and I added the student activity account audit, which was an additional engagement for them, and, and they stayed under $30,000, so they, they met or.
Next bid.
When? No, this is a three-year?
All right, with the extension, okay.
And the extension, they'll give me prices when we get to that point, and last year they kept, the last time we went to the extension, they kept the prices the same, so they've been very, very competitive, wonderful to work with, and I hope that the school committee will support this.
I think they're very open-minded about it.
I make a motion to accept.
Okay, a second.
A second.
I just had one question. How many years do we off, do we usually stay with a single auditor? I mean, over the last 20 years that I've been here, we've had two, maybe three auditors.
Most districts, many districts stay with auditors for years unless there have been issues, so.
We had one, we had one auditor for a long time, then we went to a fire, then we're down to about a three-year. Way back it was, we had forever.
Yeah, I'm perfectly happy with the auditors that we have now, I just wondered if, is there a, a protocol to change auditors every five or 10 years, just to?
Only if you're not happy, dissatisfied, or you wanna see changes. So if you're happy with them, I don't, if it's not broken, don't fix it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous.
Thank you, and the last thing I would like to update the committee about is several months ago, Superintendent Lynch and I attended a presentation at Greater Lawrence Tech to learn more about net metering projects and whether these projects would help this district save money on our electric bill. Net metering opportunities arise when a developer constructs a solar panel off-site and offers its electricity credits to other consumers such as our district, Whittier Tech, or another school district. These off-site solar projects typically produce more electricity than the developer can use, which generates excess electricity credits. Consumers such as Whittier have the opportunity to purchase these credits because the credits would otherwise go back to the utility company at a reimbursement rate less than the solar developer can earn selling these credits. These agreements are favorable to both parties because the solar company gets a higher rate for the excess credits they produce, and the consumer is able to purchase these credits for less than the amount of the actual credit they get back on their electric bill. Many school districts, including Greater Lowell, Greater Lawrence Tech, have entered into such agreements and are realizing significant savings on their electric bills, and the preliminary research shows that Whittier could save up to $100,000 to $150,000 a year if we enter into one of these agreements. Over the next couple of months, Ms. Lynch, myself, Mr. Tekejian, Mr. Leganis, we plan to do research to review available net metering options and contact the other districts who are already doing this, to ask them how their experience has been, and see how their savings have gone. At this time, I'm asking you for, for your support as we continue to research whether or not net metering would be beneficial to this district, with the understanding that the committee would need to review and approve any contract that we might come up with in order to, for us to move forward with it.
I make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Early.
Are they gonna wanna have a piece of our property?
No, no, this is, this is.
They're getting it from a development.
They're putting, let's say, solar canopies on a parking lot or out in a field, and what happens is that they produce more electricity than they actually need. So normally, what happens to the excess electricity, it goes back to the grid, so they get basically nothing for this excess production. It's worth it for them to sell it to us at a rate less than the, the credit comes back. So for example, if they sold it to us for 10 cents, we would perhaps get an 18 cent credit on our bill and save eight cents. So that's what we would like to investigate. We, we have spoken to our attorney, they say everyone saves money, we're looking at a couple of projects, but there are certain pieces that we have to tweak out, and I hope to come back in August or September with some sort of proposal that would benefit us.
Do you need a motion from us?
I would just like your approval and understand that we, you know, you're okay for us to, to look into this further.
So the crux of the situation is that this, these developers are continuously producing more electricity than they demand.
Yes.
It's not that they're producing more and banking it and then using it when they don't have enough, so the, you're right.
They can't do anything with it. They're losing money by letting it go back into the grid.
They're always producing more.
So it's worth it to them to sell it to other places because we get a credit more than what we pay them.
Is this a, is this a planned program or?
It's been around for a while, and a lot of municipalities, I know the city of Haverhill has at least one of these programs.
Is there a contract with this?
It would be a very long-term contract, they're usually 20 years, which is why we have to do our research and you have to be.
So if we went into some kind of an agreement, and then this developer all of a sudden had a more demand, we would still be guaranteed our amount of electricity?
And that's why we would work with the attorney, to make sure that we are protected.
Dr. Tucker.
Who is our present electrical, is it National Grid?
Well, National Grid is our supplier, Harry? Direct Energy.
Okay.
And these are perfectly fine to do with that, we've already, we've done some preliminary work, but we have a lot more investigating to do, references, how's it going, has it achieved what you thought it would, and it is a long-term commitment, so I just wanted to put it out there so when we bring something back, you knew what we were talking about.
I have one more question to clarify. You said that the company that we would be getting the electrical?
Credits.
Credits for, they're the ones who pay the company that we currently get our electricity from?
No, how it works is those credits are assigned to us. They assign, they actually put a meter on our building so that when our electricity comes in, it registers the credit that's linked to this solar project. That's why they have to enter into an agreement. They can't use it, so they assign you those credits through your meter. So the bill comes in, just for simplicity, it's a $20,000 bill, you get a $7,000 credit, and you pay the company back $3,000 for your use of their credits. So your net bill is $4,000 less for us, and they're saying it could be 100 to 150 a year.
Mr. Early.
It's a small world, I've been involved in a solar farm now for two years. We haven't got it off the ground yet. There's a lot involved.
Yes, there is.
The legality of it, so if you could look into a, a firm that specializes in that, there's a, I've learned a lot, and I'm still learning a lot, and I've been involved in it for two years, and we haven't got it off the ground yet, so if you could look into the legality of a lawyer that, that knows about it, and there's a lot of pros and cons on both sides. It's not as easy as it.
No, I understand that.
Mr. Tucker.
I just was curious about the size of the array, would they be on the roof, would be one acre, five acres?
It's not gonna be here.
No, all we're getting is a meter.
We're buying somebody else's stuff.
Excess.
I thought this was, I thought this was a trade-off for solar.
We could never do that right now, we, we are entertaining a building project, we would never want us put anything on the roof or on the field, someday maybe, but not until we know what's happening with the building.
Thank you for clarification.
You're welcome.
Yeah, these are established companies. Okay.
Anything else?
So we're gonna vote on this, you want, or you just want to?
She already has a motion and a second, I believe.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Go do your homework.
Okay, that is all I have for you this evening, thank you, and have a wonderful summer.
Thank you. Okay. We, come now to the committee reports, the June, annual June general items, as we've discussed, policy updates.
There are none at this time, I believe Superintendent.
We just received many updates. Some of it's just, you know, vocabulary, or grammar, or word changes.
I suggest an August meeting, perhaps, okay.
August meeting?
Yeah, we can look at the date later.
MASC, Mass Joint Conference, are there any members here?
Yep.
Need to vote a delegate?
Have to vote a delegate?
David?
Any nominations?
Nominate Dave Urban.
A second.
Second. Closed nominations. On favor?
Aye.
Need an alternate?
Need an alternate?
Wants to be the alternate?
Shalavella.
Second. Aye.
Who's going? Alana? Anna, you going?
Joanna is going to go through.
Joanna.
True.
Joanna True wants to go.
Yeah, we, we can review this, and we have to, we have to know now Zach numbers? When's the early registration?
July, by July 15th, I think they like to have.
July 15th.
Okay.
They have a meeting in July.
Those members, those members that, that aren't present, contact them, see if they anticipate going. Yeah, he's going.
We're going, yeah.
And mine will only be a three-day, I won't be there Wednesday, be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Next on the agenda is the perennial annual summer meeting scheduled July and August.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move we suspend the July meeting unless necessary by you or the superintendent that we need one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
We should have a meeting on all 12 months of the year.
You should have that tattooed on your arm.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? One opposed, Mr. Tucker. So the next scheduled meeting will be in August? You have that date?
I'll look it up. Second wins, August 9th.
August 9th.
Oh, I won't be here. I will be in Oklahoma.
Oklahoma? God bless you. Okay, instructional personnel? Mr. Dr. Tucker, ready?
The instructional personnel committee had a, a meeting this, an unscheduled meeting this evening due to the fact that there is a need for a new textbook for our ninth grade students in the co-educate, co-taught classroom in algebra. We met and have accepted the recommendation of the superintendent and the curriculum chair and the math department, so.
Do we need to move that, and the full committee? I, I move the instructional activities recommendation and vote on the Algebra 1 for September.
The first reading one?
Uh, no, we don't need it, it's not a policy.
I'll second it.
That's the book.
What is it you're trying to do?
I just need to purchase textbooks from, for the, from the LC class, just approval that I can purchase these textbooks, school committee approves all textbooks. This will be coming from a grant, so I would say about 15 to 20.
Thank you. I would get the 20 and be on the high side.
Yeah.
Any, one question's on the textbook. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yep, yep, second.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Also, yes, the instructional committee has set a meeting for September?
19.
19th at 3:30, which will be our preliminary meeting as we go over the upcoming events for the school year.
Kidokie. Okay, plant operations, Mr. Tucker.
Plant operations met this evening, we did not have a quorum, but we did have informational purposes. The usual things are gonna be done over the summer, which is the fire alarm, substation testing, but the major projects that will be encompassing is the machine shop repair, which is already underway. Machines have been moved out, the building, the room is empty, there will be a new floor and lighting put in over the summer. The second major project would be the renovation and fixing of one of our boilers, which is in need of repair. The rest of the summer schedule is fairly, summer painting, grounds maintenance, et cetera. That's all that we have for Subcommittee on Plant Operations, and at the next time we meet, we'll have to elect a new chairman, or reelect the current chairman.
Salary negotiations, Mr. Murphy.
Salary negotiations committee did meet on May 10th. Minutes of the meeting are in your packet. Motion to accept the minutes.
Move to accept.
Second.
Second. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. The upcoming meetings are, you don't need any at this time.
Maureen, do we?
I don't think you need anything.
No. Take the summer off.
Policy, Mr. Early.
Mr. Chairman, we have minutes for May 10th, minutes of the policy committee, move those for approval.
Second. They had me listed as absent, I believe I was there, wasn't I?
I believe so, and I believe we had a vote on that, too.
You can change that. Thank you.
And we need a, a meeting, I would suggest that we meet.
In August?
Yeah, how, how much time we gonna need, 6:30 or earlier or?
I would say 6:30.
All right, so by 6:30 on the 9th?
Now, I won't be there, so are you going to have a quorum to do that, or can we? How about the week before?
Why don't we do, wait till September then, do it at the September?
Early September?
How about September, you'll be?
Oh, I'll be, yeah.
You wanna do before the meeting in September, can you wait? All right, so the 13th of September?
Okay, 6:30?
Yeah.
6:30, 13.
Do we need to, more time than that?
I don't think so.
No?
All right, thank you.
If we need to meet in late August, or we can meet in late August versus September before school opens, if you want that.
I'll, I'll forward you the, the changes to the, to the policies.
If you think we need some, maybe you can, we could go a little early if need be.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, great. Meeting date, the next date is the August 9th?
Oh, we didn't accept the minutes of the policy.
We didn't vote on that?
As amended, no.
Excuse me, move act, all favor of the policy minutes as amended? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? New business, there's nothing posted on that, anybody have the new business for the next scheduled meeting? If you do, in the interim, notify Ms. Lynch. We do need a short executive session tonight.
Yes.
Need a motion to an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the administrative unit. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school. Upon completion, the next session, we will adjourn.
Okay, we're not coming back into open session.
Right.
Second.
Voice vote.
Pardon?
Voice.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, yes.
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 Mr. Early.
Yes.
She votes yes. Two-minute recess.